Alright, so, I mean this camera, I just bought it today, so I don't know what's going on with it. So now we're gonna have to use the camera built into the computer. Uh, I will be switching it back and forth between the crowd and ourselves, okay? Alright, so, first person we have up is Abdul Husein regarding curriculum. Uh, please give me, let me know when you're ready, so I can set a timer.
I'm ready.
You're ready, go ahead.
My name is Abdul Husein. Uh, we are here for the book that Nabeel Nagy, you find only one book?
Yeah, the one that was of concern, yeah, that's one copy of it.
One?
One, yeah.
Okay, what about the other library? Did you guys look at the other libraries?
That will take some time, yeah.
Okay, as a parents, we are concerned. I think that you guys heard then what's going on in Dearborn in so many states. That is happening right now about that kind of book. So, as board, we voted for you and we let you to be sit here for us and for our kids. We are concerned about our kids. And we need you guys as board and superintendent that you guys, if you find something like this, we have to know as parents, okay? Yes, don't wait until we find out. I heard that it's been there since summer, is that true?
It's been there for over years.
The books has been arrived in Hamtramck Library at summertime, not yesterday or last week. It's been there for month.
Over year, over here.
Yeah, over a year? So, it takes you that long to let us know? We didn't find out from you guys, we found out from outside. So, what did we put you there for? So, did you, did you go and find out about the book? It's still quiet until now?
So I can speak for the board, I'm gonna go ahead and address this right now. The board had no idea of any books being put in the school district. We were not informed of any of these books. Um, the board was not even notified that these books were ordered. So I just want to make that clear to the public and to the community, um, that we are just finding out this information at the same time that you are.
Okay. Can I comment on?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to tell also, the board is not in daily, daily business to know this materials was in our buildings.
As a parents, I am a guardian to my son, to my kids, to my children, to my grandchildren. So, I need to know. Because I put my kids in that kind of school, I need to know what's going on.
15 seconds.
15 second, I know we have a lot of speakers, so I'm gonna put my time short, okay? Mr. Nagy, you are responsible for this kind of thing. We put you there, we need you to let us know before anything happen. Thank you, thank you.
Next up, we have Mr. Hassan Awan, I believe.
Yes, before you guys start the time, I got something for you. Mr. Supervisor here, this is a book, I want you to read it before my three minutes. These are papers, I want you to read it.
Alright, so your three minutes has started.
Okay, I didn't sit down, relax.
But you got up and you...
Oh, but why I get up, okay?
Alright, go ahead.
You knew about the books, didn't you? The su- you're the superintendent, you know about the books. There was an email sent to you, look at it real good, you knew about the books. Don't sit here and laugh about these people because they don't how to speak English. These people called me all the way from Dearborn because I'm the activist here. You're not gonna sit here and lie to these people. You're not gonna humiliate them, you're not gonna tell them that you didn't know about the books. Look at me in the eye, tell me you didn't know about the books. You know about them, now what you gotta say about it? Nothing, because you know about it. There's an email that was sent, you said that you didn't even know about the email. There was an agenda you signed, you didn't know you signed it. So don't sit there and look at these people and pretend you didn't know about it.
Okay.
We are tired and sick of you guys saying the lie to this community. Excuse me, I'm not done with you.
Can you just tone it down a little bit?
You just said no, you're not...
I'm gonna give my three minutes, you're not gonna call me up or I'm gonna get more time. I'm gonna tell you something. These people called me because you laughed at them. You, on the other hand, how dare you, Mr. Najeeh? Shame on you, how dare you sit there tell this community you didn't know about it? The press got the email. I'm gonna make sure that people know what kind of person you are. You call yourself a Muslim, you ain't no Muslim man. You're just a person out to get the power, that's all you worry about. You, you and all of you guys, shame on you guys. These guys don't know how to speak English, send an email to Al-Baqi. They don't know what an email is, excuse me. Half these people don't know how to speak English. How dare you guys? How, explain to me, explain to me, Mr. Najeeh. You know these people don't know how to speak English in Hamtramck and you put these books on them. You sign a contract October 10th this year. Look at that book I gave you, would you read it to your kids? No, you won't. Shame on you, all you guys, for laughing at this community. What are you gonna do about it? What are you gonna tell the public? That you didn't know about it? You knew about it. You put these books for these children, for what? The mayor of, excuse me, the mayor of Dearborn put the same agenda and talked about it. What are you gonna get the, the mayor over here to talk about it too? Shame on every single Arab that we put in Michigan to make you guys people. What you did, you destroyed our community, you destroyed Michigan.
10 seconds.
10 seconds, let me tell you something. Shame on every single person that's Lebanese, Yemeni, they sat there and destroyed our community. Shame on you guys. And I want my book at the end, Mr. Najeeh, you read it.
Now you can take that now.
Alright, next up.
That's not, I need to, oh, sorry about it, thank you. Um, that book was during our vetting process was held back in a package of many selection of books that come from our publishers. So, and not just that book, many other books that are still having not been put on shelf. And as I said in the letter as well, they can reach out to the teacher.
You signed a contract.
Excuse me, reach out to the teacher, reach out to their principal at the child's school. Their child can come to that when they bring the book home. Many of the parents here have my number, I worked in the community for over 20 years. Thank you.
Alright, moving on, next up we have Mr. Imad Chama. Please let me know when you're ready, so I can start your timer.
Alrighty.
Go ahead.
So this is uh, the fir- one of the first paragraphs in one of the books. So the community could, um, if they do not, if they haven't had the chance to look into it. It starts by saying, "I remember the condom was blue and flavored like cotton candy. I put some lube on and got him on his knees and I began to slide it in, into him from behind. I tried not to force it because I imagined that it would be painful. I didn't want this moment to be painful, so I eased in slowly until I heard him moan." This is one of the first paragraphs in the book, "All Boys Aren't Blue." So, sadly, this book slipped in. But again, there's, when you guys order books from authors, you guys receive them. Before they are put on shelves or onto a table in the library, uh, they are first reviewed or should be reviewed. I stand against the committee that you guys are going to, uh, or are attempting to start for that includes parents to review books. It's not our job to review books, it's not our duty. We trust you guys as administrators to review every textbook that you guys receive from all different authors before they are put into our buildings. How disgusting is this text for a 12-year-old, 13, 14, a middle school student? People have the right to read what they want, express their feelings, but this is not accepted. I don't think, I don't wanna bring religion into it, but I have surveyed many communities, many people from different backgrounds, different races, different religions. A lot of people do not disagree, a lot of people do not agree that these books should exist with our kids. I don't know if you guys read them, the continuing of the text is more and more disgusting. So, one question, I don't know if you're able to answer, Mr. Najeeh, is what error, what mistake happened for this textbook to enter our school? So we could know how, we could advise you guys
30 seconds.
to prevent this from happening again.
There's a vetting process that we did not have before, a new process. This was over a year ago that this book was placed on the shelf in the library. And it's not an anchor text where the child has to read. So, now it's taken off the shelf for review for the profanity and whatnot. So, now with the new process, we're gonna vet the books as we're doing now already. But we're gonna scrutinize certain books even more with different individual stakeholders.
Okay, and with the last 30 seconds.
Mr. Chama, oh, you got 15 seconds, go ahead.
Uh, with the last couple seconds that I have. The textbook that entered our school is a problem that the community is addressing. I advise, this is not towards the community, not towards the board.
You gotta address the board?
No, no, the community, we as a community have to understand that we are against what is in this textbook. But do you guys know what are inside the phones of our kids at school? If we stand as a community to address this book, please address the community. Why are we given a 12-year-old, a 13-year-old, a cellphone that exposes them to texts worse than that textbook? So please.
Your time is up, thank you. Next up, we have Najib and Akil Alex. Is it Malahi or Majali? Is there a Najib here?
Najib?
Yes, Najib, in the hallway.
Is there a Najib in the hallway?
Najib?
Skip to Mexico.
Najib Jali?
Thank you, at least some by from the teacher. How's the teachers practice?
Alright, moving on, we have Ibrahim Marzab. Is Ibrahim Marzab here, in the hallways? Let me know when you're ready, I can cut you three minutes, please. Alright, go ahead.
By saying how very disappointed I am in the city and our surrounding communities. Where's the science, can we please let him talk? Where's the same fire for students with disabilities who are not receiving a proper education and not been receiving one since the onset of COVID? Where's the outrage when kids with special needs are not receiving services that are vital to their existence? Why have none of you on this board or anybody in the community came forward to support their students or their families to help them succeed? I have a daughter that's four and a half years old and she's in ECE and we have not received any services towards physical therapy, speech therapy. I've requested IEPs, uh, have not received one yet. On her, her, I, the IEP she currently has is since she was two years old. And it's even on there that she should be receiving speech therapy and till right now, she has not received any services. I wanna know what the board is doing moving forward to help these kids.
So...
Is there gonna be any action? Because it's just gonna be, you know, we're gonna say this this month, the next month we're gonna say something else and there's nothing that's gonna be happening.
So I've been working closely with Mr. Najeeh to get something moving and you will see some great changes this week, starting tomorrow actually. Um, there will be some information that will be shared to the public and the teachers that Mr. Najeeh will send out and introduce a new member to the team that will be getting our spent department up to what it needs to be. Because you're right, right now it's not where it's supposed to be and it's not where it should be. Uh, but we are having somebody come in, starting tomorrow, that will get things moving, okay?
What are we doing regarding IEPs? You guys only have...
There will be, there will be one, a specific individual that will be assigned to do IEPs. I did ask Mr. Najeeh that we as, we request him to have a set number of students to do daily. So that way, we are getting this done and getting up to date to where we should be. So, I don't know what that number will be, that's up to Mr. Najeeh and, uh, and that person, I'll have him speak more on it right now, go ahead.
Yeah, we're working with agencies in addition to make sure we get, because what happens is we get psychologists from agencies, different positions, and then they don't show up or they stay weak on the job. But working closely with the RISA and hopefully, we can expedite also the physicians and get them filled as fast as possible so your daughter can get the services she deserves.
Not just my daughter, there's other, there's other parents that have kids with special needs that are not, you know, that... The system has failed them. And we're a small community and, you know, why hasn't anything been done? That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, we have Stephanie Butler.
This is Butler.
Let me know when you're ready.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm ready. Alright, so I am that mom from Dearborn that exposed the books. I know, I see fear, I know that look very well. So, let me just start by saying that I did my research into your libraries and I did find inappropriate content in your library. So to sit there and say that it doesn't exist, including that book in an e-form that is currently checked out by somebody's student within this district.
Wow.
Um, I, I, we came to help, we got a call to come here to help. We will stand with our neighbors and we know they will stand with us. And so if anyone wants, uh, you know, our contact information, feel free. I will show you how to go and do the library searches. And trust me when I say you need to opt your kids out of sex ed, you need to opt them out of everything. Pull your medical consent back from the school district and you should do it immediately. And I'm going to end with the care president, Dawood Walid, okay? We're gonna hear what he has to say about these books. This is a speech that he gave to us in Dearborn.
Have the right and say so and have the public voice on how curriculum is shaped and what books should be in the schools. Right? Why? Because we're talking about minors, we're talking about people who are not legally adults. Any books that are considered overtly offensive, have material that's considered loofer, lascivious, in pictures as well as in words, should not be accessible to minors in...
Yep, and there's one more, yeah.
That there's a Michigan law that says it's a felony to disseminate sexually explicit matter to minors in pictures or verbally in words. It's literally a criminal statute to give something to a minor that talks about explicitly refers to sexual acts, be they heterosexual or homosexual.
That's it. I mean, it, it's there. And I just encourage you to know that there's a lot of pressure coming in from the teachers' union right now. You hear the words equity and inclusion, that opens the doorway to all of it. They don't care, you can't talk about God in schools, but you can provide them manuals and graphics on how to engage in sex. And then you're gonna undermine the parents in the city, just like they did to us in Dearborn. And tell us that we don't have the right to protest.
Your time is up.
I am here to help you parents protest.
Alright, next up, we have Abu Zebair. Let me know when you're ready, sir.
Yes, ready. Good evening, so, everyone. First of all, I'm concerned, I feel like I'm welcome here because you guys know the big crowd here, it's not acceptable, a lot of people standing outside. That shouldn't be happening, it shouldn't be accommodated. Just wish you guys there, we sorry, we couldn't give the chair, anything, shame on you guys. And I'm not gonna talk about the book, everybody talk about the, I'm gonna requesting we should have put the, in big estate, in big estate committee, board member and include couple of parents, so make sure pull out all the book from all the library, all the public school, I mean Hamtramck. And also, another requesting, if you said, you said you are the superintendent, you're the chief of the Board of Education, you should have know what's going on in this building. When you say he don't know, shame on you. You should have be resigned now and you say, I'm sorry, that happened, I'm leave, give you somebody center. So if the case in review, we should have involve any parents also, committee, to review the books, that way we know. You just say we partnering, parents and teacher and partnering the board. We partnering, but we trust you guys, but you lost our task, we don't believe you anymore. We don't believe in you anymore. They're doing their job, there's nothing to the other teacher personnel. They're doing their job, they don't teach the book, they teach the curriculum. So thank you all the teacher, we appreciate as a parent, nothing to do with guys. This is the board and, uh, parents. And other concern I have in Dickinson is, another thing I say, something we change supposed to be for better. We, uh, I suppose we come couple, um, meeting ago, I couldn't ask, the changing the time is instead of, instead of letting us, we just changed the time this year. It was, uh, was uncomfortable for us, it was, it was accommodation. And second, once I was talking about the Dickinsonist, Norwalk, we used to come pick up the kids, now they put the cone on the street. So there is no way parent can pick up the kids. I understand, I, I respect all the kids. I have, I have three boys goes to public school, I have, I'm concerned about the safety, but they don't let us to pick up the kids from the street. I know there's no parking, but it's school time, we can pick up the Norwalk buses, other doing. I spoke to, especially, personally, principal, no answer there. So I'm requesting guys kids, now is backed up the traffic all the way, yellow car. So, if you do anything, change is for better, not for worse. So once change is coming from you guys, make it worse. Thank you everyone, okay? And I'm urging you to put that, the comment, uh, three people committee, include couple of friends. If you wanna help, be one of them, but I can volunteer. So make sure next two weeks or three weeks, pull out all the book, go through a physical library. Thank you.
I'm sorry, our technology departments texting regarding the video. Looks, looks fine on my end, uh, I don't know what's going on with YouTube, but... Next up, we have Edna Husek.
Hello, my name is Edna Husek. I'm a parent of a student that attends Hamtramck Public Schools. Um, I'm just gonna read a sentence out of the book, even though it makes me uncomfortable. "I remember the condom was blue and flavored like cotton candy. I put some lube on and got him on his knees and I began to slide into him from behind." I'm wondering why do our kids need to read this? I don't get the point. I'll teach my kids to love and respect everyone equally, but I won't allow this agenda to be forced upon them at a developmental stage in their lives. They can make up their own minds when they're older. Nabeel Najeeh, be ashamed of yourself. Stop acting like you didn't know about the books. You sent out a letter last week stating there is no books. You just told us right now, there is books and you took them off the shelf. I have a teacher who just told me five minutes ago, there is no books. How, you just admitted to us there is books? She's of course the president of the teachers' union, so she's trying to defend something? I don't know what, but this is ridiculous. I went to all Hamtramck Public Schools and I grew up loving everyone equally. I've never seen these type of books. Stop sexualizing our kids, stop forcing this agenda upon them, thank you.
The reference was into the newer, the newer purchased books. Uh, there's books that have been on the shelves for years and years and years. Um, so the reference was to the new purchases, you know, this past year or less.
Alright, next up, we have Doug Botiba, Botibi? Is there a Doug here? Alright, let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, I'm ready, is it okay if I stand up?
Yeah, if you can speak loud.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. Okay, so, uh, I'm a Hamtramck native born. Uh, I felt like I had a comeback here, I don't live here anymore. I felt like I had a comeback here, it was very personal to me when I saw these things. I did hear rumors like da, 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 something was in some books. Uh, I thought kind of whatever, with nothing of it. And then when I saw, somebody showed me, just like couple people have read so far, the book that you gave, the gentleman over here, blah, blah, blah. I, I could not believe this, I could not believe this, this is disgusting. I'm a 30-year-old male and I don't wanna see this, that's disgusting. Sex ed is one subject, nasty pornographic material on writing is another subject, period. I think everyone can agree with that. Sorry, I got, I have bullet points over here, sorry, really quick. So, I just wanna say this, I don't mean to offend anybody, anybody at all. This city, once upon a time, used to be a predominantly Catholic city or religious. Again, no problem with nobody. Now it is a predominantly Muslim city, I heard from some people 80, 85%. I'm not sure exactly. Yes. So, having that said, people, 80%, let's just say that's the case, they, they're the majority. In my opinion, the, uh, you in the United States, democracy, they should be the majority. The majority wins every time, that's how that works. It should work, I don't know, unless we don't live in America, that's something different, I don't know. Again, neither gay or straight or anything else, I have no problem with anybody. I had, I have, I don't know what terms to use because I don't wanna get in trouble. I have gay friends, no problem, they don't force that on me, I don't force it on them. I'm a Christian myself, I respect everybody. Again, this stuff should not be tolerated, that stuff is nasty, that's that. Tomorrow I'm gonna have kids, that's why I don't have kids, no. But tomorrow I'm gonna have kids and, you know, I, I don't want them to see that stuff. That's that, you know, and again, young, uh, you know, we shouldn't, you know, let them, when they're 18 years old, let them make their own decision, that's that. Uh, what's it called, uh... Some people have said something about books, I don't know, Uncle Barry Finn, some other books, this and that. And they say, oh, there's explicit material in there. I don't know, to tell you the truth, I never read those books, I've never been a book kind of reader. Not, especially not those kind of books, more psychology and whatnot. So it's like, okay, if someone has problem with those books, address it, say something, you know? There's no problem, it's America, everyone's free to express whatever they want, just don't hurt nobody, don't threaten nobody, that's that. So, I mean, I don't know what to say, guys, I mean, you know, we, we all trust, you know? Again, Hamtramck native, these people, I mean, this guy clearly came from Dearborn, you know? Thank, thank God for that, I mean, every, you guys got elected, I, obviously, I don't live here. You guys got elected, we trust, Inshallah, we trust you guys, you know, to do the job that you guys are supposed to do, right? So, I mean, I don't know, you know, I guess they were there, now we gotta see to take them out. And that's that, because again, pornographic material is, is disgusting. I'm a 30-year-old male and I don't wanna see that stuff. I can't imagine a kid, you know, again, sex education is one thing, that's a different thing, okay? And that's it, you know, that's, I don't know too many Arabic words, but again, we're in a Arabic speaking society over here, this stuff is haram and Inshallah, you know, this is all gonna be...
Alright, next up, we have Abdul Qasim. Is there a Mr. Abdul Qasim here?
Abdul Qasim.
Not here?
Those enough, you should know when they say...
He's not here?
No, no, I said, you should, you should know why they put your name. Because everybody is same way, everyone in the same question in the same way. So, you should know what, respect everyone.
Okay.
We respect you and we trust you, you're working for somebody else, I think you, you know, you know, working for these people, for us.
Next up, we have Steve Batabi. Steve Batabi, is there Steve Batabi? He was?
Yeah, yeah, I think he went outside.
Alright.
Well, save his file, he maybe come back in.
He's coming back, alright.
Just recall him again, just go ahead.
Next up is Abdullah Al-Hadi.
Hadai. Hadai.
Hadai.
Abdullah Hadai, is there?
Is there Abdullah Hadai in the audience, in the hallways?
I think he's gone, he lost.
All right. All right. Next up, we have Yamal Al-Turki.
Turkey.
Yamal Al-Turki.
Yamal Al-Turki?
He was outside.
There was no space.
No space.
He was in the hallway, I don't know. He was.
All right, he's not here.
There's people talking, like, are you talking to me, or like, leave me alone, I don't want to talk to you, I don't get it. Like the lady's brother, he's standing, watching meetings.
Sadea Al-Badani?
Here.
Is there Sadea Al-Badani? S-A-D-E-A. Sadea? Next up, we have Toni Coral. Let me know when you're ready.
Okay. So I get to play the evil union president tonight. I just want to make sure that as we have these conversations, and we discuss material that may or may not be appropriate, and we look at materials, and we have intelligent conversations, I want to make sure that we keep in mind that we are not going to marginalize children who feel like they are on the outside, children who feel like they have identities that they cannot share with others because they're afraid. I want to make sure that we keep those children in mind. Yes, we can say the material that Mr. Shmak read, that seems a little over the top, and not appropriate, but we need to make sure that these conversations about material does not become about children who need protection for what they're feeling inside and who they are. And I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind as we talk about books. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, can I just say one more, one thing?
If you fill out a green sheet?
Yeah, but she just insulted everybody by saying intelligent conversation, like, are these people dumb?
Can you fill out a green sheet if you'd like to talk to people? Back to Steve, is Steve in the building? Has he returned?
That was not right, you're smart.
Is anybody...
No, she's not.
All right, that's all I have for our audience participation forms, unless somebody filled out a form and I didn't get to it, but that's all we have. Is there...
No, I just want to say, it was really good to hear from everyone, whether different tones and whatnot, but it's still appreciated, and we take your child's education very seriously.
Can you tell us about the email that was sent? That's what we want to know.
Can I please speak?
These people want to know about...
Let him speak, sir, sir, please stop interrupting.
That your child's education comes first. We treat them with most care, and so do the teachers. Actually, the book, the, that was at the high school, after teachers noticed a concern, brought it to another teacher's concern, and was put away, and that's how I retrieved it, so they care. It's one thing, you know, I get a tag here or there, but our teachers work super hard day in and day out, so do our administrators. But thank you so much.
All right.
What about the book and the line?
That concludes the audience participation portion. If you have any other questions or concerns, please email us at, what is it, info?
Info@hamtramckpublicschools.com or .org. And in addition, like I said, we'll send out a two communication to all the parents with a phone number as well. And again, you can go to the teacher via Dojo, via any platform you use with the teachers or the administrators of that building, they will hear you out and they will support. Thank you.
All right. Now we have additional board discussion, so I just wanted to say, you know, we really encourage people to come and express their concerns and questions. It's nice to know that the community is aware of things, you know, sometimes we are not even aware of them, you know? When we hear from the community, it's sometimes, a lot of times, actually, the first time we hear about it. We have requested, you know, to be informed on many things, and right now, they're working on improving that communication with the board. I just want to say thank you to the audience, because you guys really did let each other speak respectfully and showed composure, and it's much appreciated, so thank you for that. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
We want to know about the email. Please tell us about the...
Sir?
There's an email right there, I performed, I gave it straight to you, Mr. Najib. Tell us about the email. Where did that email come from?
I got a question.
From me? Where's the email? I got the paper right there, it has an email.
Discussion?
Tell us where the email came from.
This is board discussion at this moment.
This is board discussion? You just want to sit there, what's it called? I asked you to answer that question, where is the email? The email that was sent, that you signed that contract, okay? Tell us. You're gonna answer the question to a public or no man?
Just keep...
Okay, any other board discussion?
Oh, you don't want to answer that, right?
So...
We put, they put you here, they voted you yesterday, what's it called?
We guys here, the citizen concerned, we will work individually with every administration and teacher, community, we will, we hear your concern, we work hard to get this concern solved, and we will be seeing this in the future. Thank you.
I have a comment. I have a comment.
They want the...
Any other board discussion?
Any other board discussion? At this moment, it's board discussion only. I understand, there was an opportunity to talk when we had...
You want to know the what's it called, the email? Give us the email we...
Any other board discussion? No.
No, no.
All right. Resolution number nine, meaning adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Number 10.
Number 10.
We don't want to answer the question, that's what it is.
Motion by Mr. Chowdhury. Seconded by Ms. Watson. Resolve that the regular board meeting be adjourned at 8:46 PM, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion is passed, thank you for coming.
You guys don't want to answer the email, but you answer every other question. You guys are just a group of people, I don't know what's wrong with you people. These people don't know how to speak English, what's wrong with you? They don't, you sat there, you put these books on these people, they don't speak English? Look at 90% of these people don't speak English. Shame on you, Mr. Najib, every single one of you board members. What's wrong with you people, man? What's wrong with you, man? This is your community, man. What's wrong with these people, man? It's all about the power, huh? You're about the power, that's all you worried about. That's all you worried about, their power, bro. Go read that, again, my book, I want my book, give me that book I gave you. And let me tell you something, man, you see this book? Go read it to your daughter, or go read it to your son. Shame on you!